States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Father, we want to thank you for the beautiful weather. We also want to protect those who are unable to keep cool in the extreme heat. Please keep them safe. Protect our veterans and our servicemen and women of the armed forces as they serve and to protect us here at home. We ask this in the name of God. Amen.
Next row call. Mr. Clark?
Present.
Dr. Kincaid?
Here.
Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
This is true. Bye. Next thing on the agendas, two one, System 44, presentation by Teri Vogel and Lori Cox.
I wanted to take the opportunity to talk to you guys a little bit about about the gains that we saw with System 44. You spent a lot of money on that program and so I just wanted to take the opportunity to let you know, we had about a half year implementation and so just to talk to you a little bit about what we saw. When, when we adopted System 44, we had representatives from that company come in and they helped us to set goals and these were our implementation goals. Fifty percent of the System 44 students would meet or exceed their expected student reading inventory growth goals by the end of the year. We met that goal with sixty percent of our students. So, our, our goal was fifty percent and we hit sixty percent of them, hit their student reading inventory growth goals. Another one of our goals was that students will participate on the software daily for an average of four to five sessions for fifteen to twenty minutes per session. Our average was fourteen minutes, so we missed that goal by just one minute. So, that's just something that we'll work on a little bit, you know, harder as the new year comes up. Students will complete three to four forty-five, forty-four book modules this year. We met that goal with five. So, they got through at least five and our goal was three to four. A completion of forty-five plus topics in the instructional software. So, there's a lot of different topics that students can go through within this, within this program. On average, the students completed thirty-five topics. So, we didn't meet that goal, but then again, we weren't that far from it. I'm sure a lot of that was just because teachers couldn't go as quickly because it was something new they were implementing. So, they weren't getting through topics as quickly as they wanted to. Students will complete a minimum of six to seven reading counts quizzes per year on books or ebooks. Within this program, students can read books on the computer, ebooks within the program, and they can also read some leveled readers that they can pull from a kit within the, within the classroom. And we did not meet that one. We hit, on average, students completed one reading counts quiz. We had twenty-four students total in this program. I'm assuming that much of that could count for the fact that students are reading books during their monitored independent reading practice through AR math, which is another, or AR reading, which is another program we have through Renaissance Place Star. So, it's not like they weren't getting reading time, they just weren't doing it through System 44.
So, is System 44 additive to the standard AR reading?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't replace it at all?
No, it's, it's added.
Okay. So, where's the time come from to do it?
It would, it would come-
Obviously, something has to give.
Yeah, it would come during their rotation time within the intervention. So, they have time every day to read independently. All kids have that. That's within some part of the day. But during their System 44 time, they would be given time to read independently if there's time during that, during that module. That could have been another reason. Do you want to speak to that, Lori? Do you have any, any idea? That was just my hypothesis of why students wouldn't have taken as many of the ebooks quizzes through the System 44.
Well, actually during the forty-five minute intervention time when they're doing most of this, they're either meeting with the teacher or they're on the phonics program that is on the computer-based program. They can take those, but like you said, the time, there wasn't always the time when it came to meeting twenty minutes with the teacher at their small flex group time and then doing their program back at their seat. It's one of those components that as they go through the program and they get better at it, there'll probably be a little bit more time freed up there for them to do that. They also, on those books, they have time that they can during their regular tier-one time, they can go get those books, those books were available for them. But I think the teachers just beginning it this year were just still so oriented towards the AR and then reading the accelerated readers that we need to get better at having them read these little level readers and taking quizzes on here as well.
Just giving them that option that they're just not used to. The scope of the work, the scope of support included, there were, with, with the implementation, it included two days of professional development and six days of in-class support. So, System 44 had trainer come in, trained the teachers for two days. Lori sat in on that training as well with her instructional coach. I sat in on those trainings. And then there were six days where they provided a coach to come in and give them in-class support. So, that coach was able to watch them, make sure that they were going through the components of the program correctly, that everything was working right. And that equated to like three cycles of classroom visits and coaching during their planned time. So, they would go in and watch them while they were implementing it and then they would meet with them during their planned time to talk to them about anything that they needed to adjust so that all the components were working correctly. The executive summary that they gave us, preliminary analysis or observations, the analysis included data from twenty-five System 44 students. So, we had twenty-five initially that went in. They took a diagnostic test to place them in the program and one moved out. So, a lot of the data you'll see like will be twenty-four students. Okay, so when we get to that a little bit. End of the year, 2015-16 data export indicated strong growth and software use in System 44. That is according to the System 44, to their technicians. They took all of the data from what our kids did and they compiled these slides. So, their, their data indicated strong growth and, and software use. System 44 students have completed an average of sixty-one software sessions and five System 44 segments. Again, a lot of this goes down to implementation because if you don't implement it correctly, it's not going to work. So, that's what a lot of, of their, their slides indicated to us. This one was an analysis sample selection overview. How many student records had sufficient data for the analysis? Twenty-four of our twenty-five that started. So, again, that's a really good number and that shows that teachers were using it, that shows that it was monitored because if it would have showed that we had half of that or a third of that, then we would have seen that kids weren't using the program the way that they should have. This next one, this shows where students were placed at the beginning of the implementation. So, students had to take a placement test and you can see that sixty-four percent of the students that were given placement test, they fell within that two hundred to three hundred and ninety-nine Lexile range. That shows they need help, they're not at grade level. And then we had a small number, just eight percent, just two of those students that were a little higher at the four hundred to five hundred and ninety-nine Lexile range. And then we had some that were really low at the beginning reading or one hundred and ninety-nine Lexile range. So, the graph depicts the percent of students reading Lexile levels at the time of placement. So, you can see that these twenty-five students that were given the diagnostic tests needed the intervention. It's, it's obvious that they needed it. We had some really great gains here. Sixty percent of the students in the program made gains regarding their reading Lexiles. So, they got, they went up in their reading Lexile into higher levels. So, that's really good news. And if you look at this slide, this is just a typical Lexile measure. So, third grade students should be reading between three hundred and thirty to seven hundred, they should be in that Lexile range. And you could see that our students were, the majority of our students were in two hundred to three hundred and ninety-nine. So, they, they needed this intense intervention. This slide shows software sessions. Again, our goal was fifty, we hit sixty-one. Minutes per session, our goal was fifteen and we hit fourteen. And then the system series, we hit five, but when I met with her to talk about that, she said that, you know, that would sort of be based on an entire year's implementation. So, if we would have had longer, we would have been closer to ten or fifteen.
This was how long?
It was a half-year implementation.
Okay.
These were some of their summary recommendations after they looked at all of the data. We've, we already met with Kim, the rep from the company, and Lori and I met with her and we've already talked about these things and how we can address these moving forward. They suggested that we provide training, of course, for any new teachers that will be implementing the program. Consistent coaching and modeling, increase daily software to fifteen minutes. Again, we were only at fourteen, so we're going to try to get that up a little higher. Meet regularly to talk about the analysis and the data collected because there's a lot of data that's collected that they can use to make sure that they're targeting interventions appropriately or making sure they're fluid. And consider revisiting the implementation model. She, she suggested that the time be a little bit longer. It's really hard to fit in longer than an hour for intervention time. So, I mean Lori gave them as much time as she could and she'll, as she looks at schedules, if she can get them more time, she will. This one was just a slide that showed student progress and, and use. We had nine students in series one through four, fourteen in series five through eight, and two in series nine through twelve. So, again, those are just, the series are like topics or units that you go through with the students. And this was just a half-year implementation again. That probably would have been higher if it had been a full year. This one showed that our goal for topics completed was forty-five and we were at thirty-four. So, of course, we want to get more topics covered. Another reason we want to get more topics covered is not just so that they'll get through more of the program, but also so that they can build content knowledge. A lot of low, low poverty kids, kids in high poverty, and they don't come with a lot of prior knowledge about different topics. And so, if we can get them through more topics, then they learn more about, just about different things. So, they're, they're just more prepared when they're, when they're answering any question about any given topic at a, at a time. So, it's, it is good to get them through those and we'll, we'll be working on that. This was the phonics inventory results and I was pretty excited about this one. You can see that nine students, if you look at the blue area, nine students had a change in accuracy and that was seventy-nine percent. So, seventy-nine percent of the kids that went through that program improved their accuracy in reading. And that's huge because if they're more accurate, then they're going to read faster and their fluency will be better. And if they can read faster, then they'll be able to retain what they're reading. And then if you look at the green part of it, we had one student change fluency and thirty-three percent of them had a four-plus point gain fluency. And they just had some notes down at the bottom that accuracy indicated students had improved their ability to recognize or decode words. So, decoding words was improved for students and fluency would indicate that they improved their ability to recognize and decode words with automaticity. We have a lot of trouble getting growth fluency, really across the district. So, these, this is pretty encouraging, especially because it was just a half-year. If we could have had a full year implementation with this, we probably would have even seen higher gains. This is the phonics reading inventory results. Again, seventy-nine percent improved their accuracy in the phonics inventory. Thirty-three percent had a growth of four-plus points.
And four points is a year's growth.
Yeah.
So, a third of our kids made a year's growth in one semester.
So, that's pretty exciting. Sixty percent had improved Lexile scores and ten percent exceeded their annual growth. I'm going to let Lori come up and she's going to talk a little bit about how we're going to, we plan on continuing the implementation of System 44 next year.
You're not going to show that video?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Some of this I thought I knew until I got some information on funding for another grant that went away. So, on the funding, I'm, I'm, I was going to use some of my school improvement money and then beg Teri for some help and some district money. And now I'm really going to need that district money because my C3 grant was cut, totally out of the state budget. So, but this will take priority. So, between my school improvement grant that I get, a good portion of that will be used to pay for continued training for my teachers in implementation. And then also I'll probably use some of my instructional budget to pay for the consumables because the students use consumable workbooks that they work through. Now, the good thing is my third graders can take their books right on up to fourth grade and continue where they were at. So, really, I'm just looking at having to buy some consumables for my third grade. And then Stacy and I, my instructional specialist, she and I will continue to monitor and be in the classrooms during that time. Currently, they have forty-five minutes for this. And like you said, if I can find the time in the budget, in the budget, in the, in the, in our schedule, I will. However, it's tough. Doing the forty-five minutes was, was tough. I mean, we don't have, we don't waste a minute at, at Garfield and it's already pretty stressful at the, at the rate that we go because you essentially go from one thing to the next thing to the next thing to the next thing. There's not, there's not any downtime. So, finding an additional fifteen minutes will be tough, but who knows? When I started out, I didn't know if I could find forty-five minutes and we did. So, sometimes if you just tell yourself you've got to find it, somehow you manage to find a way to do it. So, and with the professional development, we're going to have them come back in just like they did the prior year. So, any questions?
We do have a short video we'd like to show you.
Let me ask a question first. And obviously from System 44 people, there's been improvements. So, I'm going to try to tie it back and ask Lori a question. To the State's Reading Sufficiency Act, I realize the demographics are different from one class to the next. Last year, the number of third graders that had to go to summer school to pass on to fourth grade versus this year. Assuming demographics are the same, there should be less Garfield third graders.
There were.
And numbers are-
There were. And our fourth graders this year, they were the ones that had to go to third grade summer school or not last year and scores were, we were thirty-seven percent proficient is what we were at in third grade last year in Garfield. And this year, we were sixty-two percent proficient in third grade.
It was about a fifteen percent improvement in proficiency.
Twenty-five percent.
Thirty-seven to fifty-two?
Sixty-two.
I'm sorry, sixty-two.
Yes.
So, how many had to go to summer school?
And then, I don't remember, we looked at that, but I have, it was a significant drop because-
I don't have Garfield specifically, but last year, we had sixty-two go. This year, we had thirty.
That's district wide.
That's district wide. And then our third graders last year to the fourth grade, their, their proficiency scores went up as well. So, they grew. Are the ones that were third graders last year and then this year in fourth grade, their reading proficiency was higher than what it was in third grade. So, they are growing and more and more students are becoming more proficient as they go through.
Were they this in fourth grade too?
No, I'm just saying the third graders that were, that were on RSA, that there's less of them in fourth grade on an RSA. Because RSA, you can be on an RSA and not do summer school.
Because these are the questions we're going to ask when Teri comes back and says, this is a good deal, we need more money to put it in all the elementary schools. So, we're going to say, we need some state proof.
Right.
Obviously, these people are saying it's doing a good job.
Right, right.
I don't question whether it is or isn't.
Right.
I'm saying we need to tie it back to things that-
And we'll, we would be able to tie it back to our data if we were able to do that. We would be, we would tie that back to Garfield's actual OCCT test.
And mainly what they were showing us with these slides that they sent and what I wanted to show you today was that it was implemented with fidelity. Again, if you spend the money and we don't implement it, it won't make an impact. So, we met nearly all our implementation goals. Lori monitored it closely. I went in and monitored it. Stacy was in and monitored it. And so, I really felt good about the progress that, that we made and, and that System 44 time was protected and that it did happen the way it was supposed to.
Do I need to put the memory stick in?
Where'd you get the file from?
It was on my memory key.
Yeah, it says it's all there. It's not real. Two students.
Sorry.
They came in and made a real neat little video of our students doing, actually implementing the System 44 and they, we did some interviews with our students and our teachers that we wanted to share with you.
Yeah, it's not really open still.
It's still here.
Try it that way.
See if it works.
I got it. Teri, it doesn't play.
When you hit that, it doesn't play?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, sorry, it's not working. Okay, I'm not going to make them. It's up here and wait, so I don't know. It was.
Maybe we need to get it out. I don't know.
Two, two point two, corrective reading, presentation given by Teri Vogel and Jill Henderson.
Let's hope this one works. Corrective reading is another program that was purchased earlier in the school year and I, I got some data together at the end of the school year and I just wanted to talk to you guys about how we did with that. So, we, I talked to Dr. Pennington about implementing this district-wide in tier-two and it was extremely expensive. So, I went back and asked him if we could implement it with our special ed students. So, that would be a tier-three intervention. And he said yes, you guys approved that. So, corrective reading, it focuses on decoding, so students being able to decode text and comprehension. Two skills that are really crucial for students in grades three and up. It addresses a wide range of deficits many older learners face and it gives them the structure and practice they need to overcome those deficits. So, often we'll have students in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade that they, they can't decode. They're, they have some kind of phonics hole. And often, we can't find what it is. We, we don't know exactly what's going on because maybe they can show us that they can do that in isolation, but they're not doing it when they read. So, again, this is a program that's scripted, it's systematic, it's explicit, and it gives students a diagnostic test that places them in the program. It places them according to a level and that level will give them the instruction that they need to fill those phonics holes. So, it has multiple entry points that they can come into. It has a decoding strand that teaches vocabulary and a comprehension strand that teaches students to write, think, and speak. There's built-in progress monitoring that goes on with this program through what they call checkouts. So, the teacher doesn't have to really plan for it. It's scripted. As she takes kids through the program, a checkout will pop up and then she'll give the students that checkout and then when she gets done, she knows. Okay, is what I'm doing making an impact or do I need to go back and do something different? So, what I did is I went through and I took all the special ed students that had been using this program and it hasn't been in a year-long implementation either. It happened-
About seven and a half months.
Yeah, around October, November is when we implemented it. So, as you can see in Woodlands, our third grade students averaged about a one-year, one-month growth. And that is huge for students in special ed. If we can even see a year's growth, that, that's great. But these students had a whole year's growth in one month. That means they had one month of catch-up growth. So, if they were in third grade and they were functioning at a second grade level, they are now at a third grade level first month. And that's huge. So, really exciting. Fourth grade students at Woodlands averaged an eight-month growth, so a school year's nine months, so they were almost a full year. And fifth grade students averaged a one-year, two-month growth. So, we had really great growth at Woodlands. At Roosevelt, our third grade students had a nine-month growth, that's, that's one year. Fourth grade, five months, and fifth grade, eight months. And again, these are just an average. I took all the students that participated in it and averaged their growth. So, some might have had a little higher and some might have had a little lower. This is just an average. Liberty, third grade students had a six-month growth, fourth grade, eight months, and fifth grade, three. At Lincoln, third grade, eight months of growth, fourth grade, nine months of growth, and fifth grade, five. At Trout, third grade students had a one-year, two-months growth, fourth grade, one whole year, one-month growth, and fifth grade experienced a seven, seven months of growth. At Garfield, our third grade students averaged a seven-month growth, fourth grade, nine, and fifth grade, one year and four months. That is huge catch-up growth. It's just, I mean, I don't know how I can explain how exciting that is because I know as a principal, I never saw this kind of growth with my sped kids. I could see half a year's growth, three months, four months growth, but a whole year growth and more, that means they're catching up. There are students that are typically behind their peers and that means that they're catching up. If they had nine months of growth, that meant that they, they grew every single month of the year within that school year. So, very exciting. Union, their, their third grade kids had one whole year and four months of growth. Union, their, their third grade kids had one whole year and four months of growth. Fourth grade, seven months. And fifth grade, nine months. Our district average was our third grade students that were in special ed averaged a one-year, one-month growth over the whole district in special ed. Uh, fourth grade, eight months. And fifth grade, eight months. And I'll take it all day long. I'm very excited about those numbers. Jill's going to talk to you a little bit about sustaining the program.
Okay. And just to give you an example of what the, where the students started and where they ended, we had one student that started at a middle first grade level and ended up reading at a middle fourth grade. And we had a student start at a middle third and end up reading at a middle fifth. So, lots of wonderful growth, which also brought on a lot of confidence in the students. That's what the, the teachers reported, that the students began to be more confident, to read more, to read more out loud in the classes. The regular education teachers saw the difference, and it was just really exciting. But not only was it exciting for our students, it was exciting for our teachers. We have a lot of first-year teachers that come into special ed or, and we also have a lot of turnover. And so, putting this curriculum in their hands and seeing this kind of growth really helped to spark, you know, an excitement in them, to be able to feel like they were really accomplishing something and making a difference with the students. And for, um, I'd say the first time in a long time, we've only replaced one special ed stu-, uh, teacher in, in the district in elementary. So, we were really excited. I feel like they, they felt good about themselves and wanted to return and teach again. So, that was, that was also something that we were happy about. We're going to continue ongoing professional development and not just spending money by bringing the company back in, but you saw a couple of these teachers that had some real success with this program, and they're going to continue to provide that professional development for the other teachers so that they can teach together and, uh, watch each other and help each other through PLCs and through those professional development days that we'll have throughout the year. And there's going to be, of course, routine monitoring. I go out, Terry goes out, we watch, uh, the teachers in action, we watch the students, and we give them feedback on what's happening. And then we can also be able to, um, have the principals evaluate them using the, the program. And then, of course, there's always replacement of the consumable materials. It really is minimal. Uh, we, I believe we're, we spent ten thousand dollars on the materials, and then we put five in at the end of the year to have them ready to begin this year because we want to start the second week of school. We don't want to be starting in October. So, uh, they're ready to go, and we anticipate maybe having to spend another five thousand to replace throughout the year as students progress into other levels. So, if we need to, we could bring back in for twelve thousand dollars. We could bring the company back in to do those one-on-ones and go out to the sites and model and watch the teachers or bring them to the next level of how they could use the program because there's many layers to it and many things that they could build upon. But we want to make sure they get, you know, the basics and the foundation going before we spring something else on them. So, we're very excited, and I appreciate you guys funding that and giving them the tools they need to be successful so the students can also be successful as well.
One question. Obviously, it's commendable to have that kind of growth. I mean, no question about that. But the, the large variance from one school to the next or from one grade to the next, is that the demographics or the makeup of the student? Or is it some teachers are just better than others making it work?
I would say it's a variety. Um, you know, you had some very first-year teachers that have never taught before at all, uh, true first-year teachers using this program. And they had growth, which is great. They wouldn't have had that if they hadn't had something in their hands that they would have felt good about and been able to use every day that was prepared for them and ready for them. Some of those teachers that had the tremendous growth have been doing this a long time. They've been in the regular ed and they moved to special ed. They understood how to, um, use that program very naturally. Um, you know, some of it is students start out really, really low, and they made great growth. It just wasn't comparable to some of those other students that didn't start out quite as low. Or maybe they had some help, extra help at home. There were a couple of sites that used this twice a day. They had lower numbers in their programs and they had extra help in the building that they were able to get a double dose versus just one round. Some of the behavior problems are a little more, um, prevalent in some of the sites than in others, so it helps to move along in the program faster. So, there's a variety. It could just be, um, any number of those things. But growth is great. And so, the more they use it, the more comfortable they'll become with it, and you'll see it take off for all students.
So, I would assume as teachers become more familiar, growth should continue, maybe not exponentially like it is, but the, the, the more the familiar the teacher is, the better it should be for, for the growth.
I, I would say so, definitely. Also, a couple of sites used this as their intervention rather than, um, referring students for special ed. They have started to intervene before. Typically, we have two hundred and fifty to three hundred assessments or evaluations that our site, the school sites do. This year, we had a hundred and seventy-eight. So, it cut down on those initial referrals for special ed and gave them a tool to intervene before making, uh, that evaluation and giving them a chance to, to catch up before they went that route. Any other questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Three-one on our agenda is public comment. Does anybody have a, a comment from the public?
Nobody signed up.
Okay. All right. Next is a consent calendar. Uh, drive a motion to approve the consent calendar. That's printed.
A little moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions on anything? Okay.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Okay. Five on the agenda, um, is to vote for the following items. Uh, five-one is consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following district financial reports.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Uh, five-point-two, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following people for appointment by the board for the following positions for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. But...
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Five-three, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve accepting the GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, for the Washington Elementary Classroom and Restroom Project.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I see you.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Number five-point-four, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the district budget for fiscal year seventeen.
Make a motion to approve five-point-four-two. Prove what we have, maybe some additions to it later on down the road.
Hopefully.
As long, as long as it's good.
Yeah.
If it's not good, I don't want to make that motion.
We'll have a rule this year. We don't approve any cuts.
Yeah. Will that work? Okay.
I'll second it.
I got a second down here.
Marvin. Okay. Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Consideration of and vote to approve or not approve a motion to authorize a change in the district representation in the litigation against the Oklahoma Tax Commission for Corrected Distribution of Motor Vehicle License Revenues from Gary Watts, General Counsel for the Sand Springs Public Schools, to Riggs, Aberney, Neal, Turpin, Orbison, and Lewis Law Firm.
The reason we're doing this is, uh, Gary Watts, who was the one that kind of spirited this effort, is retiring from the Sand Springs School as of, uh, June thirtieth. He'll still continue to do the vast majority of the, of the, uh, legal work pro bono, but we had to have a way to, to pay our bills, so to speak. And so, this is how we're going to do this.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve five-five.
Second.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Five-six, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve a motion to authorize change in the district's agreement approved by the Ponca City Public School Board of Education on March twenty-first, two thousand sixteen with Gary Watts. Representation status for Gary Watts will change from general counsel to coordinating liaison. Originally, the board had committed nine thousand for this lawsuit, but however, the cost, according to the new agreement, will be ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and additional cost of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I'll approve five-point-one. Six, I mean.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Okay. Five-seven, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following contracts and agreements. A, agreement with PageMaster Website Design and Development for District Website. B, agreement with Tyson Krupp Elevator Corp., Corporation for Elevator Maintenance for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. Agreement with Loftus and Wetzel to provide certain insurance services to the district as recommended by the superintendent. D, agreement with United Systems Lightspeed to provide an internet filter software program. E, agreement with AT&amp;T E-Rate to provide phone service for the entire school district. F, agreement with Time Clock Plus by Data Management Incorporated Systems. G, agreement with Lyndaby Johnson for Psychoeducational Services for Students Enrolled in Ponca City Public Schools. H, agreement with Lobby Guard is for software and equipment used for visitor management. I, contract with CenterPoint Energy as a third-party natural gas provider to the district. J, contract with Pinnacle for CTO server, equipment, installation, data storage space, backup, and replic-, replication program. And two, maintenance agreements with three years in the built-in warranties. K, agreement with Wil-, Wilson, Dotson Associates, PLLC, to provide an annual audit of financial affairs and transactions of all funds and activities in the district. L, renewal with Oklahoma Schools Assurance Group for workers' compensation insurance for two thousand sixteen-seventeen. And M, agreement with Learning Sciences International for eye observation renewal.
That's pretty good, Judy.
I need some water, I think.
Judy, I'd move to approve five-seven, but I'd like to make one comment. If you look, look real closely at L...
L, okay.
By compliments to the school system, the administrator, Shelley, whoever the heck did it, that is a big financial savings to us right there.
Okay.
All these others, a good job, all these others, we talked about in depth in the Finance Committee. Dawn and I would have quizzed every one of them. So, I'd move to approve five-seven in its entirety.
Okay.
And as much as, we'd like to take credit for that as much as anything else, it's because our employees have done a very good job of, of being safety-conscious. It's workers' compensation. And, uh, you know, workers' comp, you, is, uh, dependent upon, uh, your employees, uh, being safety, following the rules, doing those kinds of things. And the other thing is, is we've been, uh, pretty adamant with staff that we're, we're doing year-of-the-end, that, end-of-the-year activities, that we don't play volleyball with kids, and we don't do that kind of stuff. So, we don't have as many teachers' knee injuries as we've had at times in the past.
Bottom line is three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred thousand dollars, and we'll take it.
We have to spend somewhere else.
Yep.
Second on the motion.
Okay.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Five-point-eight, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve, approve a proposed executive session for the following purposes. And Dawn asked for an executive session. So, to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report, to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation, to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property, and to discuss negotiations. Okay. Do I have a motion for an executive session?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We are now in executive session.
Do I get... Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Now, we're in executive session.
We're kept by the board minutes clerk and will remain confidential. Five-eleven, vote to approve or not approve recommendations for termination, reassignments, resignation, and employment of personnel. Do I have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
I second it.
Okay. But...